There's a pledge of allegiance. And, Betsy, in honor of you joining us today, if I could ask our town clerk to lead us in a pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy.
We do not have Wednesday's pet here. Selectman, former Selectman Stanek is not joining us. We're going to pass on the minutes for now. And that leads us up to recognition for the Junior Women's Club of Fairfield, their 50th anniversary on April 8th. We have a proclamation here that I would like to read. And, from the Town of Fairfield, whereas the Town of Fairfield congratulates the Junior Women's Club of Fairfield for celebrating its 50th anniversary this year -- 325 more, you'll be as old as the town. And whereas, the Junior Women's Club of Fairfield, which was organized in 1965, is a nonprofit organization comprised of approximately 30 women who live in Fairfield and its surrounding towns, and who work to improve Fairfield, its neighboring communities, and Connecticut. And whereas, the purpose of the Junior Women's Club of Fairfield is to provide services and to promote civic, educational, cultural, and philanthropic activities -- sorry about that -- within our community. And whereas, the Junior Women's Club of Fairfield is open to women over the age of 18 who wish to work with others to improve their community and themselves. And whereas, the Junior Women's Club of Fairfield has been involved in numerous community improvement projects, and have worked on many projects that support a healthy and safe environment for Connecticut's youth, as well as those supporting Fairfield's elderly and disadvantaged populations, and many, and many which contribute to the betterment of the community. And whereas, the Junior Women's Club of Fairfield presents several annual community event fundraisers, including a Visit to Santa's House and Fairfield Touch a Truck, which simultaneously enhance and enrich the community while raising funds for charitable organizations and high school scholarships. Now therefore, I, Michael C. Tetrow, First Selectman of the Town of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim April 8th, 2015, as the Junior Women's Club of Fairfield Day. Congratulations, ladies and gentlemen. Now, we have Jen?
Yes.
And Christine?
Yes.
Okay. Or Kristen. Yes, not just -- okay.
Christine.
Would either of you like to take the podium and tell us a little bit of background on the Junior Women's Club?
Oh, sure, if you have a minute, we don't want to talk too much.
Please.
Sure, thank you. So, am I addressing you?
Please just introduce yourself, and if you speak towards us --
Okay.
The camera will catch you.
Great, okay.
And everybody else will hear you.
So, thank you very much for inviting us here. My name is Jennifer Hinkel, and I'm the President of Junior Women's Club of Fairfield. And joining me is Christine Egan, who is also on our executive board. And the Junior Women's Club of Fairfield obviously has been around for 50 years, and we're very proud of that accomplishment. It's a very small service club, about 30 women at a time, and 30 very hard-working women. And as, as you mentioned in the proclamation, we do a lot of annual service projects, like Touch a Truck and a Visit to Santa's House, but every few years, we choose a different charitable beneficiary. Right now, we've just transferred from the Cardinal Sheehan Center, where we created the JWC Girl Zone, which was an after-school program for young girls. And now, we've taken on our, our new partner, which is Alpha House in Bridgeport, and we're very excited to get started with them. And in fact, on April 8th, when it's Junior Women's Club Day, we'll be having them come and speak at our Membership Drive Event, and talking about their program, and we'll be having them at our next meeting, so we can start planning different activities we can do with them to help them.
Okay, wow. How does someone join the Junior Women's Club?
Well, actually, we're -- it's a very easy, it's very easy to join the Junior Women's Club. Come to a meeting, come to one of our events, look on our website, jwcfairfield.com, and we have a huge Membership Drive next week, which we're really excited about, because we're commemorating our 50 years by doing hands-on service projects as the theme of the whole event. So people will come and get to sample what we've done in the past.
Okay, so the website is JWC --
Fairfield.
-- Junior Women's Club.
Mm-hmm.
JWCFairfield.com.
That's right.
If somebody wanted to talk to somebody, is there a phone number somebody can call?
Actually, we're, we're not using a phone number anymore. We just go by email, and then we call the person back.
Okay, very good.
So, using the website is the best way to reach us.
Go to the website.
Yes.
Great.
Or come and meet us next Wednesday.
All right. Well, Kevin, did you have anything to comment on or add?
Just quickly, Jennifer and Christine, thank you for being here, and congratulations on your anniversary and everything you do for our town. And it is just wonderful to hear the amazing work that, you know, 30 great women can do for our town. So, thank you so much.
Yep. And I also want to reinforce Kevin's thoughts, but I also want to say that this is just another example, from, from my perspective, of how many people are involved in contributing back to our community to help make Fairfield special, help take care of those in need in our town, that many people don't hear about or see. So I want to thank you for coming here and sharing that with us. And this is one of the things that we see on, on the Board of Selectmen that, that keeps our enthusiasm up for town, and we appreciate all the work that you do and all that you and your --
It's really special to represent such a long legacy, and we're having a big event to commemorate the actual anniversary in the fall, and we're inviting hundreds of alumni. So that will be, you'll all be invited.
Fantastic.
But we're really looking forward to meeting everyone.
All right. If I can invite you up, Kevin and I would like to present this to you.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. Come on over here.
Okay.
Kevin, why don't you turn on one side and I'll be on the other?
Sure.
Present this to you.
In the middle.
Right here.
Okay. Very nice. Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Congratulations on your years.
Thank you.
Neither of you looked at all. Let's see, if you couldn't join until you were 18, that would make you --
Notice I'm not saying anything.
Yeah, no, don't. I hope you'll forgive us, we have to now go to take all our course.
Oh, please. Join ahead.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Next up, another recognition. We have, in honor of the Third Annual Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service, which is April 7th, we have a proclamation to read. From the Town of Fairfield, whereas service to others is the hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet town and city needs, and whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and counties, from educating students for jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families, to providing health services and helping communities recover from national disasters. And whereas, national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities, and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas, AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants serve in more than 60,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic neighborhood and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas, in Fairfield, the first town in Connecticut to sign on to the Mayor's Day Initiative in 2013, when it was first launched, national service participants are foster-grandparents at McKinley School, which is one of the Schools of Hope funded in part by the United Way of Coastal Fairfield County. Foster-grandparents support a multifaceted program that provides individual support to struggling students, ensures that students have books in, in the home, and engages parents in literacy-skill-building activities with their children. And whereas, national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve with both, both through their direct service and by recruiting and managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas, national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas, national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas, the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, City of Service, and mayors across the country to recognize the impact of service on the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 7th. Now therefore, I, Michael C. Tetrow, First Selectman of the Town of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim April 7th, 2015, as the Mayor's Recognition for National Service Day. Congratulations. Do we have any representatives from -- please, come on up to the podium, and congratulations. If you'd just take us a moment and tell us a little bit more about your organization.
Sure. My name is Sarah Witherington, and I'm the Program Director of the Foster Grandparent Program in Bridgeport. But we have, well, thank you, first off, Selectman Tetrow. As the proclamation states, Fairfield was the first town to recognize and come on board with this Mayor's Day of Recognition and National Service. We appreciate that. And now today, this year, we have 2,000 mayors across the nation that are recognizing national service. They serve through AmeriCorps, through the three programs of the Senior Corps, Foster Grandparents, Senior Companions, and RSVP, which stands for Retired and Senior Volunteer Program. In 2015, more than 750 AmeriCorps members served in Connecticut, and also additionally, 2,700 seniors in Connecticut contribute their time and talents through the RSVP, the Senior Companion, and the Foster Grandparent Program. These national service participants teach children, provide mentoring service, wellness training, and much, much more, and are the backbones of our communities. I'm here today because I do run the program, and Ann Osberg, our State Program Director, could not be here, she's in Hartford. And we do serve all the towns around greater Bridgeport, of which Fairfield is one of them. We're especially proud of our foster-grandparents who serve at the School of Hope through a partnership with United Way of Coastal Fairfield County. These foster-grandparents support a multifaceted program that provides individual support to struggling students, ensures that students have books in the home, and they receive training in the literacy skills. More than 1,000 students have received services through the United Way and Corporation for National Service School of Hope Program. So we look forward to continuing to serve the Town of Fairfield. And on behalf of all national service programs and the Corporation for National and Community Service, I'd like to thank you all very much.
Well, thank you, and thank you for all you do. Kevin, did you have any thoughts to share?
Thank you very much for all your leadership and all the service that you provide to our town. We certainly recognize and appreciate that very much.
Yep. And I appreciate you working with United Way to help out at McKinley School. I think that's just a fabulous cause, and really appreciate what you're doing to strengthen our community there, and help that school community out at the same time.
Thank you.
All right?
Absolutely.
Let's formally present the proclamation.
Absolutely. There you go.
Is it okay to take the golf commission all at once?
It is, please.
All right. To here, consider and act upon the following appointments. To the Golf Commission, Brendan O'Hara, Republican, 60, Sleepy Hollow Road, 415 to 420. Is Brendan here?
Yes.
Oh, great. It's my old neighborhood, by the way. I grew up on Nuttling. All right. And Ryan Scully, unaffiliated, 241 Lakeview Drive, with a term of 415 to 420, to fill a vacancy for Andrew Janis, whose term expired. Is Ryan here?
Yes.
Okay, great. Do you have any questions for our friends?
No questions. I just want to thank both gentlemen. You have great resumes and backgrounds, and I'm sure you'll do a great job on the commission, and thank you for volunteering to, to assist the town.
I have a personal request for both of you. If you, if you could endeavor to make the course easier for those of us that --
We'll try to look on the weather first.
Okay, thanks. And if you can get those findable golf balls, that would be helpful also. But on a serious note, thank you very much for volunteering. And again, part of what makes Fairfield special is the amount of volunteers that come, step forward to help us run our town. We could not do it without you. All right? And I think the, there's no question that Fairfield is richer for the contributions you're making with your time. So thank you very much on that. Any further questions?
No, thank you.
All right. Any comments from the public? All right. Did we have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
And I'll second that. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, and thank you to both of you. All right. Next set of appointments. To here, consider and act upon the following appointments for Penfield Building Committee. This, these appointments require RTM approval. Steven Patenello, sorry, Steven, unaffiliated, 147 Trillium Road, to fill a vacancy for William Sapon, who resigned. And David Zief, Democrat, 1265 Fairfield Beach Road, to fill a vacancy for Kenneth Jones, who resigned. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second. Any comments or questions?
I just want to thank them for volunteering. Thank you, both of you gentlemen. And this is a big project, and it's very important to our town, and I know that you'll make some wonderful contributions to the committee and to our parks and recreation.
I'd like to add on that. I've had a chance to spend a bit of time with Stephen, and we had an excellent conversation. I'm very impressed with his background experience and the way he approaches problems. So I'm looking forward to working with him on Penfield Building Committee. And Mr. Zief, we've known each other for a while, and I'm thrilled that you are taking time to contribute back to the town. I know you contribute in so many different ways, and I've been very impressed at other events with some of your volunteer and work in community service for other organizations. I'm thrilled that we have a chance to utilize you in a town capacity here in helping us get this very important project done. So thank you. Any further comments or questions?
No, just, thanks, guys.
Any comments from the public? Back to the board, are we ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you both, and congratulations. All right. Next up, to here, consider and act upon the following appointment. Tree warden, Jeff Minder, from 1114 through 1115. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second. All right. And Mr. Minder's been serving this capacity part-time.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any questions for him at the moment?
At the moment, no.
Okay. We kind of went through this a little back when we considered your interim appointment. So I think that every, all the feedback I've gotten has been very positive, and I appreciate the way you've reached out to residents. I appreciate the way you've reached out with to UI and helping coordinate the tree vegetation enhancement program?
The tree trimming program, yes.
Yeah. And helping, I'm going to say, protect our, our streets and neighborhoods as we go through that and work closely with them, especially on this pilot, to see what the impact of this is. So I thank you, and certainly it's a very visible position because of all of that, and appreciate your help there. Any further comments here?
Just a quick thank you for your efforts to date, and good luck going forward.
All right. Any comments from the public? We moved it, right?
We did.
Yeah. Ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. And then the, to here, consider and act upon the following appointment to the Water Pollution Control Authority, Robert Sinta, Republican, 150 Old Academy Road, for a term of 1114 through 1118, to fill a vacancy for Dominic Benicio, whose term expired. Is Rob here?
He is. He's reflected.
Sorry, these are my reading glasses, I can't see that far back.
[laughing]
All right. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second here. Any comments or questions?
I just want to thank Mr. Sinta for volunteering for this very important commission. I look forward to working with you, and, you know, thanks for volunteering.
Thank you, man. And I'll echo that and just say, we've known each other for a little bit here. I'm very impressed with your work in the private sector. And again, I want to thank it's, it's residents like you that step forward to contribute your, your day job skills to help the town, and we couldn't do it without you. So thank you very much, and I appreciate your volunteer service.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public? Back to the board, are we ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Rob, thank you. All right. Next up, from the Town Attorney, actually, in this case, this is a review of bond council opinion for the approval process for bonds in the Town of Fairfield.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Attorney Staffstrom, would you mind coming to the podium and stepping us through this?
Welcome back. Thank you, Selectmen Kylie. I'm John Staffstrom, for the record, from the Avocfoam Pullman and Commonwealth Bond Council to the Town of Fairfield. And based on some recent meetings, we've been asked to give our advice on the bonding process that is actually followed by the town to, to adopt a capital appropriation and a bond ordinance. I believe that you have the opinion that we have rendered to the Board of Selectmen, to the Board of Finance, and to the Representative Town Meeting. I will preface the discussion on the advice letter by saying that we represent 20 or 25 cities and towns in Connecticut, and I would suggest to you that your charter is one of the most deficient in actually laying out a specific bonding process. Many, many charters, many, many of our municipal clients actually have a chapter that's entitled bonding and take you through the, through the process. That being said, we clearly can construct and have followed a process in the town for many years for passing a capital appropriation and a bond ordinance. I'd like to take you through our advice letter now. The basic process, the basic process for capital appropriation and a, and a bond ordinance is premised on the fact that you have to have both of those. You have to have a capital appropriation and then a bond ordinance if the, if the project in fact is going to be funded by, funded by bonds. And the Connecticut General Statutes give municipalities broad authority to fund capital appropriations and to fund those through the issuance of bonds. The Town's Charter, I like to say, is, is, is sort of like the U.S. Constitution in a certain respect. What's very clear in the Town's Charter, there are two separate branches of the government in the Town's Charter. There is the Board of Selectmen and the First Selectmen, which is the executive branch of the government, and then there is the legislative branch of the government, which is the RTM. And the powers of the Board of Selectmen are, and particularly the First Selectmen and being the chief administrative officer, are very broad in, in starting capital projects, in contracting, and overseeing all of those things related to the town. The authority of the Board of, the Representative Town Meeting is similar to a legislative body, which is final approval of items that come through the process from the Board of Selectmen. And in your case, as in many other communities in Connecticut, you also have an interim step, which you have a Board of Finance. And your Board of Finance is really not, there's not too much discussed about your Board of Finance in the Charter, other than to refers to Chapter 106 of the Connecticut General Statutes, which is, which applies to the operation of, of Boards of Finance. Boards of Finance exist in many Connecticut municipalities because the Board of Finance, the theory on Boards of Finance is they really are the watch guard for the town, the watchdog for the town. The theory why Board of Finances were established under state statute is to create a board with some financial responsibility, some financial acumen to help, to help to govern the affairs of the town. So I think of this as a three-step process. You've got the executive branch, you've got the legislative branch, and you've got the watch guard in the middle, with significant powers, by the way. They're not just, they're not advisory, okay? The bonding resolution in the Town of Fairfield, the formal process for that, is the Board of Selectmen adopt a capital project authorization and a bond resolution, okay? Neither the Board of Finance or the RTM have that executive authority. They are not the bodies that, they are not the bodies that initiate a, a capital project or a, or a bond resolution. After the bond resolution is adopted by the Board of Selectmen, it then goes to the Board of Finance, and the Board of Finance does have very broad powers in that regard. The Board of Finance can accept the action of the Board of Selectmen, as they often do. They can reject the action of the Board of Selectmen, as they rarely do, or they can make modifications to that. The, they have broad authority to make a, make reductions in the amount of capital appropriation and the bond authorization that is sent to them from the Board of Selectmen. And the, and as I said, they have broad authority to do that, and they have in fact reduced projects in the past. There is a point, however, where a reduction from the Board of Finance would actually negate the action of the Board of Selectmen in approving the project. For example, if you had a $10 million project, that they reduced to $6 million, but the Board of Selectmen knew that the project could be only, could, could, absolutely needed $8 million to be built, that would in effect be a rejection of the project. And I'm not aware that that has ever, that has ever happened. The, in the case of, in the case of the other authority they have, they have the authority also to expand, to increase the appropriation and the bond resolution for a project. What they do not, and here we draw a distinction. We draw a distinction, the town five or six years ago went to a specific listing of capital projects. And again, remembering that the authority for initiating a capital project rests with the Board of Selectmen. The, the Board of Finance does not have the ability to add a project. So for example, if the Board of Selectmen had considered 10 projects and decided to pass eight of them to the Board of Finance, the Board of Finance cannot add to those eight projects. Where we get into a little bit of a different area, however, is what we would call a unitary project, such as a school, okay? Because at that point, the Board of Selectmen would have passed on a school project. And the question is, if the Board of Finance is adding to that school project, have they actually taken over the authority of the Board of Selectmen to initiate a bond resolution? That really is a question of materiality of the addition, so that in certain cases, we would suggest that the Board of Finance has the authority to add to an appropriation and a bond resolution, okay? But again, there, there could be a point where that was material, and it might in fact have, it might in fact need to go back to the Board of Select. The Board of Finance also has exercised and has the authority to, as they most recently did, to suggest to the Board of Selectmen that the amortization schedule on projects should be changed. And so they have broad, broad authority in, in that regard. If the increases, if the increases, if the, if the increases in a project are such material, material that they in fact changed the project, okay? Or went significantly beyond the scope of the project as determined by bond council and the Town Attorney, then that resolution would need to go back to the Board of Selectmen for final approval before going to the RTM. In the cases where the changes are not material, then though the resolution passed by the Board of Finance would go on directly to the RTM for action. Let's see. If an item is returned to the Board of Selectmen, obviously, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance then, as they have done many times in the past, sort of engage in a discussion about what the scope of the project should really be before it goes to the RTM. And I would point out that the whole purpose of this process is really so that there's collaboration between the Town Boards, so, and the RTM, so that the town gets the best advice from the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen get to exercise their executive authority, and the RTM gets to exercise final, final approval. Following approval of the Board of Finance, okay, I would, I would add one other, one other caveat under the charter. There, there is a case, let me go, let me do the RTM first. Following approval by the Board of Finance, as we have filed, the, the project then goes on to the Representative Town Meeting. The Representative Town Meeting has the authority to reduce an appropriation.
Mm-hmm.
Again, a reduction that was so significant that in fact rejected the project could occur, and I don't, that has never occurred to my knowledge, but that could occur, and at which point you sort of act as where zero. Or the, the Representative Town Meeting does not have the authority to increase a project. That is not within their purview, that's within the peer view of the executive and what I call the, probably the watch guard.
Yeah.
The watch guard. The one exception to that is you've got a provision in your Charter, in Charter Section 12.6, which allows an appeal from, from the Board of, from the Board of Finance cutting an appropriation. So somebody, presumably it's not going to be the Board of Selectmen, but some department or other could appeal to the RTM, which on two-thirds vote could add, could add money to, that was cut previously by the Board of Finance. that was cut previously by the Board of Finance. And I don't recall that that section has ever been used in the capital appropriation arena. It may or may not have been used in the general fund arena, but it exists, so we have to point it out.
Right.
And then the last step of the process is that there are voters who are unhappy with the action that's gone through all of the entire process. There obviously is a, is a referendum, referendum provision in, in the charter also. So that's sort of the way I think, we think the whole thing hangs together in our analysis. And again, it's sort of simplistic to go back to say it starts, you have the executive branch and the legislative branch and the, the watch guard, but that really is the structure, that's the structure of how your charter coupled with the state law, the state law works in this, in this context.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any follow-up questions at this point?
A couple of quick ones. The memo was very thorough, thank you very much. Getting through that was, was, was good reading. A couple of minor-
It was, it was fun to write, Tim.
I can only wonder. In, in the case where, let's say, you know, we passed a project to the Board of Finance that went from 10 million to 8 million, let's say they made a change that was just on the right side of it not being material, meaning it wouldn't have to come back. And then, then let's say it went from the Board of Finance to the RTM, and they made further reductions, and maybe it came out at six or seven. And possibly, but possibly from our view, from, you know, from the first vote here to the final vote at the RTM, it might be material, but it may not have been a material leap from board to board. What would the mechanism be if something like that were to happen? If it finally got to the RTM in a change twice mode, but still at that point appeared to be materially different than when it started here, would their vote of approval automatically just push it forward from that point? Or would we have some recourse to, to come back and say, you know what, it's changed a couple of times, it's not where we wanted it to be from day one? How would something like that, even though it's unusual, how would you navigate through that?
I think, again, as I said, in, in cases like this, it's a case-by-case basis, but the, the situation you've just sort of described, where what I described, the Selectmen approved a $10 million project, the Board of Finance cut it to eight, and the RTM cut it to seven, I think ultimately, the first selectman and the Board of Selectmen need to decide whether the project can be done for the $7 million.
Okay.
Because presumably, 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 the way this process starts, you are operating on the best possible information. Now, that information could change as it goes to the other boards, but, but you're the ones that appoint the building committees, you're the ones that are overseeing, you're, you're the ones that are vetting that the building committee is bringing you cost estimates that are real and realistic. You're, you know, you're, you're looking at the compliance issues, are we doing this to comply with ADA, are we doing this to comply with environmental issues? So I think, I think Selectman Kylie, at that point, it does, it, 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 somebody has to vet it at the final step of the process to say, is, is-
Is it doable, so?
Is it doable?
Okay.
And I think that's where the building committee comes back. If we hand them money that's not enough to, to meet their spec or their design-
Right.
They're going to come back to the Board of Selectmen and say, we can't do it.
Can't do it.
It doesn't make sense to go forward.
Yeah.
If, as, you know, occasionally it's happened, in order for something to go out to bid, it also has to go through our purchasing authority. The purchasing authority has to know there's enough funding in approval, approved funds to complete the project, or the purchasing authority is not going to start the bid process.
Right.
And I think the other piece is that, you know, if it's a DPW project, a non-building committee project, if we don't have enough money to do the job right, we're going to bring it back to the Board of Selectmen-
And push it through again.
And come back through and say, okay, what, what have we learned from what the comments of the other board? How do we go about, as Attorney Staffstrom said, do we have to meet with the leadership of the other boards and say, hey, how do we get this done? Now, do you, do you really want to say no? Is that what you're trying to get to?
Right.
So I mean, that, that's where the one thing, as I said earlier on in my, in my explanation here, and if a reduction, it's actually two points of reduction, it's actually the nature of a rejection, you can't build the project.
Right.
But, but, but I think what the Board, other boards are saying, we're not really rejecting this, they're saying, go back and look at the cost, which is, I think, if the Board of Selectmen decided the project needed to proceed, you would sort of unfortunately start the process over again. But hopefully with some discussion, as the first selectman alluded to, to the leadership of the other boards as to what's acceptable, and perhaps to share information that might convince them one way or the other.
Good. Thank you for that clarification. And my, my other question is, at the RTM meeting, one of them, there was some discussion about, you know, there was a process that applied to normal building projects, but there might be a slightly different project if it was a school project. Is there a difference in how you would opine on this based on whether it's a regular building project or a school project, or are they two in the same?
There is, there is no difference. I think that one, one of my partners was at that meeting, and I think where we got lost a little bit on that is my analysis, that I told you about the, the listing of the individual line items. The town, the town, I think only five or six years ago, sort of passed a lump sum bond project, a bond amount of $30 million, and now there are line items. So that I think the, the distinction I go back to is that, the distinction I go back to is that the, that line items cannot be added unless the Board of Selectmen puts them into the process. But as far as a school project, I think it's clear that a school project can be adjusted, can be reduced by either of the boards, can be increased by the Board of Finance if it's not material, but the Board, but the RTM itself does not have the authority to add to the project or to add a capital appropriation, because if you look at the way the charter is structured, that would be really taking away, that would be taking away the executive authority of the Board of Selectmen, who ultimately have to oversee the capital appropriation and the bonding.
Okay, so there's, so there's no difference?
There's no difference.
Yeah, I'm kind of impressed, if you go back to kind of classic Yankee ingenuity. If you think about it, in order to spend a dollar, we've got to get three different boards to pass it. In order to remove a dollar, all it takes is one board to decide not to spend it. So it's three times as hard to spend money as, as to not spend money, which seems to be a classic New England tradition.
Well, because the RT, well, it's classic New England structure, we want a lot of pool of everything, that's why we have 169 cities and towns in Connecticut. But ultimately, the RTM, the RTM has the ultimate authority-
Right.
-over the purse, as they do in your, in your, in your, in your general fund also. But, 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 but within reason, because I think your example, Selectman Kylie was a good example, if you cut an appropriation too far and the project can't be built, you're in effect rejecting the project.
Good, right. And the last point of clarification, I'm pretty sure you touched on it, if, if we send along a bonding package that has, you know, eight items in it, and let's say it started here with 10 items, and we took a couple out, and we passed it along to the Board of Finance, and there were eight items left, they do not have the, they, they have the ability to vote those up or down, or to make an adjustment within them that's not material, but they, they would not have the authority to say, okay, there's something in here for $300,000 that we don't like, and we want to take that out, but there's another one over here that we do like for about the same amount of money that we want to bring into it, so net, net, the dollars would be closed, but I heard you say they could not do that.
You mean a new project that you did not approve?
That's correct.
They can't add that.
Or a new component within that project.
They cannot add that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes. And basically, in our terminology, when we have a list of non-recurring projects, as we pass them from here, that those individual projects, those 10 items of non-recurring can be reduced or subtracted, but nothing new can be added in.
Right. Yep.
And that, that also makes sense, because ultimately, ultimately, any project that the, the Selectmen and the Board of Selectmen approve, and then goes to bonding, has an effect also on your general fund.
Right.
Okay, I mean, so, and, and to the extent that the, the budget resides here first, I mean, this is the body that first presides, that first presides over the presentation of a budget and, and move that step along. I mean, there is a, there's not just a capital effect anytime these actions are taken, there's a general fund effect on having to pay for the debt service.
Right. Well, good, because that's exactly what happened this year, or close to it. The Board of Finance took a view at the bonding of the capital projects, and they had some decisions to make, and they very properly pushed it back to us for further consideration to either add or move some things around, so it looks like we did it right.
Or to adjust the term of the bond.
Exactly.
To make sure that, that-
That's right.
Whatever we were financing did, had a useful life longer than the term of the bond.
And frankly, that is, and frankly, that's why state statute has designed for municipalities to have these Board of Finances, to bring a certain level of, of financial oversight and, and hopefully acumen. You've got some people on that board, I know, who are very adept at, I shouldn't say they're all, when I say they're very adept at financial matters, but, you know, those types of boards throughout the state tend to drop, attract people to, to those positions who have some financial experience that they can bring to the town, much like you're lauding all the other volunteers here.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I think I'm good, thank you.
Any further questions for now?
No, I'm good.
I've, I've had a chance to sit with this a bit, and to me, it seems to model very closely, if not identically, what our past practice was, so that provides some level of comfort, because it, in terms of how we're stepping through this. So, thank you for taking that. I think that the other boards are going to be interested in also hearing from you on this.
I'd be interested in talking to them.
Kevin, if we have follow-up questions, we can address those at, at another board meeting, or if we want, we can get back to Attorney Staffstrom in the meantime, if we want to answer quickly.
Great.
All right.
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you. Next up, to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Chief of Police. Resolve that the town of Fairfield may enter into a memorandum of agreement regarding the, I'm going to say fiscal year 2014 State Homeland Security Grant Program with the State of Connecticut Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, Department of Emergency Services, and Public Protection. And further resolve that Richard Felner, as emergency manager for the town of Fairfield, or his successor, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town of Fairfield, and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivery of all documents and documents contemplated by such documents. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
And I'll second that. Is someone here to speak for the Chief of Police?
Yes.
If you would, please. And if you'd just take a moment to kind of fill us in a little bit on what this is about, a couple of questions off the top. It seems to say fiscal 2014 here, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And in the second, in the second paragraph, that seems a little bit to be talking in, maybe not straightforward language. Could you clarify that for us?
What this is, it is the 2014 state grant, Selectmen, that has already been approved in the budget.
Could you please introduce yourself?
Sure.
We, obviously, we know you, but-
Sorry, for the record, Lieutenant Tursi, Fairfield Police Department, here speaking on behalf of Chief McNamara. And again, thank you for editing me to the agenda, taking a couple minutes out of your time. Yeah, the 2014 grant program has already been accepted from the state, and what this is, it's, they are requesting, and the state actually gave us that language, which is probably why it's confusing.
Same guys who work on the state budget?
Yeah. I won't comment on that. But what they are requesting is a resolution from the town of Fairfield with the state for a memorandum of agreement to accept the funds distributed throughout the regions of the state, which you know were Region One. And this will allow us to utilize those funds and the allocation of equipment purchased by those funds throughout our region. The point person is Chief McNamara and Deputy Chief Liddy, who sit on a panel, and the panel, I believe, who actually dispersed the funds is in Stamford, Connecticut. That's why their signature is also on there. So the funds itself are pre-allocated, there's no sustainability grant, there's no percentage that the town has to put forward. They just require that the MOE is signed by this, approved by the board, signed by you, First Selectmen, and they need a point of contact, which they're requesting be the emergency manager of the town, which is Chief Felner or his successor in the case of retirement.
Okay.
And this is something, Mr. Tetra, that will probably come to you every year. The 2015 will probably need to be approved in 2016. And once a year, we'll have to go through this and create a new memorandum of agreement. And I, I believe we sent you electronically, have a copy if you don't have it, the entire, the entire agreement that the state requested. It was simply, we filled out our information, and if you approve it and co-sign it, I get it back to them. Stamford is the fiduciary, if I'm saying that properly, and it will go up to the state.
Is it, is any mention of how many dollars involved for the town?
Not specifically for the town, but I believe it is for the region. I believe it is on page one, or that would be for your page two of the MOE, on number, just reading it, number six.
Part six?
I believe so, so yes.
It's like there's about $5 million for the entire state.
Yeah, and if I'm reading it correctly, I believe we received $317,698.
But that's Region One?
That is for regional allocations through Region One, yes.
Yep, it's 317, yes.
And specifically for the town, I don't believe the town-
Item six on page two.
Correct.
Got it.
And I believe that's why the multiple towns within Region One sit on the panel to, how to distribute that particular funds.
How much money did we get last year, do you know, Kevin?
I wasn't involved, I do not have that information, actually, sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in, Kevin. Do you have any questions?
No, I'm good.
All right. And just while we're continuing to discuss, may I have a motion to accept this?
So moved.
And I'll second. We did that?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. And then, please continue with discussion if you have any.
No, I think I'm, I think I'm okay. We'll know the amount later, and I, I saw there were some estimates for next year as well in here, and toward the back, and that's a state-by-state estimate.
Correct. And that's, yeah, how that divvied up, that will be Chief McNamara and Deputy Chief Liddy will be in on the Region One planning, and how much say we have over that would be just one of-
Right.
-those members who are one of the state. So we do have a say in it. Unfortunately, we do not solely control the funds.
And we are Region One, how many regions are there in the state?
I believe there are 15 in the state.
15?
Uh, wait, I'm sorry. I'll just back that up.
Is it that many?
No, I, I think I'm, I think I spoke.
I think in four or five, I thought was.
I will, uh, seven.
Seven, okay, because they're estimating about, if I'm reading this correctly, roughly, roughly $5 million for the next fiscal year, so we'll, we'll get some chunk of that to our region and to our town.
Correct. And I will check up on that and get the other incorrect information, just in case I'm, I'm not accurate with the, the amount of regions.
All right. Any comments from the public? All right, back to the board, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
And sir, what would be the protocol? Do I leave the documents with you, because I'll need a signature to submit?
I would leave them with Jen. Make sure we get those.
Thanks, Lieutenant.
All right.
All right.
Next up, the Dwight Roof Building Committee charge, to hear, consider, and approve that Dwight Roof Building Committee charge, may I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second. Is someone here from the Board of Ed to kind of describe this project a bit, so we can match that up to the charge? Mr. Morbeto, if you introduce yourself, though you are a frequent visitor to the city.
Have been recently. Sal Morbeto, Manager of Construction, Security, and Safety for the Board of Education. The project is a roof replacement at Dwight Elementary School. It involves all our roofs at that school, except for the all-purpose room, that roof was replaced a couple of years ago. Point of having a building committee is so that we can apply for OSF reimbursement per state statute. And the aspect that was passed for this, I believe you're reviewing that now, is essentially the same aspect that was passed by the Board of Education last year for the Mill Hill roof replacement.
Any early feel for range of, range of costs?
Uh, we have it in for just over $1 million.
Just over $1 million? And how many square feet, say again?
That one is roughly $39,000 square feet.
Okay, and that excludes the all-purpose room?
Excludes the all-purpose.
$39,000, okay.
Okay, this seems pretty straightforward to me, because we just did one of these, I'm going to say about a year ago-
Right.
-for Mill Hill. That project is complete, were there any issues with Mill Hill?
No, that was a zero defect project, it went as smoothly as possible, and beautiful installation. installation.
Okay, so we have basically a similar project with a similar charge going in at Dwight, done by the same committee.
I believe that's what the intention is, is special projects standing building committee on the Mill Hill project.
Moved them over.
Moved them over.
Right. Right. Quickly, in a perfect world, what would the timing be?
The special projects building committee has a special meeting set up for, assuming that you're passing this tonight, April 7th. There's an RFP out for architects, hopefully they'll select it that night. They also have a follow-up meeting, special meetings set for April 13th, just in case they needed one more meeting to select the architect. Within approximately four weeks, they, the architect should be able to get the design ready for bid. Process would be that we would need an approval over at the Board of Education of those plans. That's pretty straightforward, and it's a, what they call local review. We pass a lot of documents up to the office of school facilities. Once we have our sign-offs, once we have our plan approval, which is the building committee and the Board of Education, they'll send us a letter saying you approved the bid, we hand that over to the purchasing director, it's advertised, we have a walk-through, usually another four weeks, and we would have, be in time for our summer mobilization on that project. The size of the project probably would take six to seven weeks to complete. We have 10 weeks in the summer, so it works out.
So if all of that follows suit, then we would be finished for the school year in September?
Yes.
Is what I'm hearing?
Correct.
Okay.
I think that's, as I understand it, that's an important point that you just raised, because we cannot do roof work when the school is inhabited, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Only vacations.
Good.
Except the number-
It sounds like a pretty, it sounds like a pretty tight timeline, but it sounds like you can do it.
We were even tighter on Mill Hill last year.
Were we?
And we got that done.
Okay.
Moving forward on the, you know, we would have had four more weeks to work with this if there wasn't the back and forth about what you were just talking about before with the bond, shuttling back and forth between the boards. We would have, you know, ideally had four more weeks, but it works out.
Okay. And just one, one last thing, since we're coming off the Mill Hill project, which is very similar in nature, and as, are, are we far enough through that to have a final accounting on reimbursement and how we made out net, net at the end?
The reimbursement, interesting point, all the paperwork's ready for getting our reimbursement, it cannot be filed until July 1st.
Oh.
It's just the cycle of the, the state bonding commission authorization. Essentially, the job is accepted by, is already accepted by the state.
Okay.
The legislature approves the authorization, and the money goes into that checkbook that will sign out the money, July 1st. So it's all poised to have a nice packet ready for them, lots of that.
Okay. I mean, it's not quite done yet, but the project is done and the paperwork is ready to go. Are our financial expectations still the same as far as what we expect to get back?
It's going to be about 26% back.
It is.
It was highly reimbursable, there's very few items that were-
That fell outside.
Were reimbursed.
And, and that percentage starts at 27%, so it's-
It's somewhere around 26 point, it changes each year, I think it's 26 to 9 on Mill Hill. I expect that to be right around that fraction.
Okay, but if we're getting 26% back, that's effectively, we're getting almost 100% of the expectation.
Correct.
Which on the typical project doesn't happen, because there's more-
It gets caught.
...cost classified as not eligible for reimbursement.
Correct.
So that drops us down to now at 22% or so.
Usually that's where we net out.
Okay. Just to kind of put this in a framework, this is a very good numbers, my point I was trying to make.
Yes, it is. And pretty much it should be on Dwight also, should be pretty high or very low in the eligible.
All right. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Any further comments here?
No.
Mr. Morabito, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's the draft. Now, the next piece is that we have to assign the special projects building committee to do this project. So the next item, item 11, is the assignment of the building committee to hear, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the first selectmen. Resolve that the special projects standing building committee shall serve as the Dwight Roof Building Committee for the purpose of performing roof renovations at Dwight Elementary School. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
And I'll second that.